I'll call this meeting to order on November the 5th. And we will begin with the chairman, Mr. Thompson.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you to the state here, God. Thank you for your many blessings, your Lord, and watching over us, taking care of us, your God. Just pray that you can be there today as they have all these concerns in school, your God. Just pray for all our students and teachers, staff, your God, that you watch over them, your Lord. Thank you, the sisters we're working, your Lord, and the people we work with, your God. Just pray that you bless all of them, your Lord, and ask you, your God, to just protect those that are overseas that are fighting for our freedom, your God, and military, watch over them, your God, as we, your evangelists today, your God, just ask, your God, that you take care of all those that have lost loved ones fighting for our freedom, your God. Just thank you again for your blessings, your Lord, lead us to God, and direct us away, and help us to get what you stand on, pray.
I think we have a group today that they were playing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to let the interl甫 say it, and Carol Slatter is great.
One with rights.
Beautiful. Some good stuff going on. Yeah, introduce, introduce yourself, and then tell us what you want to do when you get out of school. Minutes of live meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 1st at 1:30?
I'll say it.
I'll favor. And we're going to take a look at the approval of the agenda.
With, with your permission, we'd like to make an amendment to add personnel to our report discussion also to the action.
We don't have a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of personnel.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll favor. There's not a lot of individuals who've agreed to address the board, do they?
There are none.
We are now open for anyone that wants to speak. If we have any public comments at this time. All right, we're going to do a few director updates today. Our principals, if you can, when it's your turn, when you've come through the plan, you can fill us in on any updates so you won't have to get up to a reading. Mr. Green, you have some updates for us?
I do. I do not have budget amendments today, but I did include in your packet expenditure reports. I'm going to go over those very briefly. You see these on a monthly basis, but hopefully all I want to go over is the second page. I want to go over the variances now that we've got a budget in place. So at the bottom, the last line there are a little variance for each of the tons. For local, we're over budget by five percent. We like to show to the county that we're spending just a little bit more than the forty-seven thousand five hundred that they give us per month. For Fund Seven, that's Impact Eight, that's over budget by thirty-five percent. We had, we've had to pay a few employees that are traditionally paid out of state or failed out of Impact Eight because of the delay of getting our state allotments to us, and also the federal funds that we have for carryover between July and October doesn't always cover all of our salary expenditures. So we did have to pay a few employees out of Impact Eight until we received those funds. Fund Eight, we're over budget there by eighteen percent. And Fund Eight is our grants. We had one expenditure in there that was a nice gift. It was a grant for the laptops. That was a significant expenditure. It was approximately a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So that threw that variance kind of out of whack if you look at us trying to spend, have expenditures of equal amount each twelve months. In state fund, we're under budget by two percent. Federal fund, we're under budget by twelve percent. Child nutrition, we're under budget by sixteen percent. And capital out labor, we're over by a whopping two-hundred-and-fifty-one percent. That original budget, when we presented that to the county, was about approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That included sixty thousand for the air conditioning at the elementary gym, which we, we weren't able to go forward with that. So it reduced the, the original budget down to eighty-one thousand five hundred. As you can see there, we spent two-hundred-and-thirty-two. So we'll make, we'll make budget amendments to cover those expenditures as we go through the year. We'll make sure that we're not over budget on capital out labor. Any questions?
Questions? Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to let you know that we were going to have our flex dinner, our annual ice skating dinner. On the twenty-third at the high school, about clock, and I'm going to give you your invitations.
At the district level, we have sent a group of teachers to the Math P-16 conference with a goal to work on math vertical alignment through the curriculum. We've got the new Common Core standards, and we want to start striving to work toward math alignment to make sure that we don't have any gaps, that we're getting our kids with an A to B in math as they move forward from grade to grade. So that's something that we're currently working on. We've discussed math benchmarking to begin at the elementary. We're again looking into that to try to find what would be the best thing. Read to Achieve Law. This is an unfunded mandate that's coming down from the state in regards to third grade. Mr. Walter and I attended a meeting on how to implement that at the elementary level. So we're, we're working through the nuts and bolts of that for this, for now. But we're supposed to be getting the portfolio for third graders in January that they have until the one-hundred-and-seventy-fourth day to work through to show proficiency prior to EOG and retesting and Read to Achieve. And then, of course, if they don't show proficiency, then we would be looking at required summer school for those children based off of law. And again, this is an unfunded mandate. On Thursday, November the seventh, from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty here in the boardroom, we have someone coming here to train our principals and assistant principals on the new teacher evaluation system. There's been a plethora of problems with home-based power school, the new teacher evaluation system. Mr. Smith and I are quite confident that the same people that designed the alumni care website designed all these things for state or town because it seems to be working about as well. But we have someone who's coming here to try to get us trained on side with that. We're in the middle of a Project Unify Climate survey at the high school. It involves students, parents, staff. We're one of twelve schools in the country that's been chosen for this because of the distance that we've been doing with the frisbee athletes and Special Olympics. And a part of that is an event this Saturday, which is going to be the Neon Night event at the high school, the five K, and just the music and the fun for the community to come out. And that's a Project Unify event as well that's coming up.
Thank you. This is Indian Heritage Month, and we have things planned for this month. And starting out this week on Thursday, in the tribal council building at two-thirty on Thursday, they're going to the St. Beloved Woman, Miss Ella Bird from our community. So that's at ten-thirty on Thursday. On Friday is the replay for June Alaska up at the June Alaska Museum. That's happening at eleven-thirty. TJ said to be sure to tell y'all because in the paper it's one, but it's at eleven-thirty. And that's Friday? Friday. And I've got books for y'all. And the inside of the books are Provo rochures. And we're fully staffed except Miss Paige Rose just had a baby boy who weighed nine pounds, four ounces. His name's Canyon Wayne. Yeah, we're, um, Canyon. And we need to run the relations with tribes and parents of students residing on Indian lands through today to get reaffirmed. And it's not out of date, but we, we kind of think, and we talked about it, that if we do it in November, doing Indian heritage travel to Oregon, because we forget sometimes in years past. And it hasn't gone to Impact Eight and Title Seven.
So there's just a reaffirm? You've got a copy of it?
I do. Looks safer coming at the bottom instead of the top, but... These books are a little different. These are more like talking and listening and reading with your children. It's a Cheeks book. It's called, it's called Turkey. Turkey, okay. They said we had a turkey cow, but I don't have a turkey cow.
What were you doing that with Ella Bird?
The tribal council building in Cherokee. She's a parent of a lot of our physical grandparents. And she did our summer arts council, or summer arts school. She did the quility with our students.
Gotcha. Carolyn, Donna, James. The art's beautiful, right?
Uh-huh, yes, isn't it? I like it. It's just a little different. It's not that way Cherokee or Indian language. It's just, I think she's staying at the front. It's just a talking lesson and reading with your children.
All right, we'll look at any updates you have or methods for the plan. So we'll start with Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Wallace will mention this too. We do have a Bedford State program this Thursday. I'd like to invite you all to that. It's at two o'clock at the high school. Jamie already mentioned the Neon Night, a big event that's going to play Saturday night down at the school. We're going through town. There's going to be a lot of people signing up, and kids are excited about that. Frank, Klein, and Sean, and Martin, both in Urban Porchall all competed at the State House Country Meet Saturday. And Frank and Sean, that were both all-state, both over finish third, so they had a great year in cross-country. And our football team has their last regular season game Friday night over at Cherokee. And playoffs will start then the following week. And I know that our first round game will be a home game. We will have at least one home playoff game. And this last month, we administered a plan test to all the tenth graders from high school, went to several different churches, did that in their fellowship hall. And then we also had the TSAT in October that we gave to students that signed up, I think about eighteen students or so signed up for TSAT. And my school approval plan. Do y'all have a copy of this with you, or I'm just going to highlight a few things. Our school approval plan, our team worked really hard on this over the last month. One of my goals, I'll just be honest with you, over the last few years, our plan has been kind of set on the shelf. It's not been something that we've used a lot. The state's mandated that we have meetings due out of the year and things like that. And I think, so what I wanted to do, I made clear that our school approval team is I wanted to have a document that we could use, a document that we could actually measure the changes that would make a place in the high school. And I think that we've done that. The first place that we started, if you just flip through it on page two, it has our goals there. We wanted a new vision and a mission statement in the high school and a belief statement, which is something, we've had a mission statement probably has been in place for the last twelve years or so. And we wanted something that we could relate to. We wanted a vision that could be our vision from now on in the high school. So we started working on this. We started looking for keywords. And the word that we came up with, we wanted to use was success. And because success is something that's measurable in every student. Success isn't, isn't the same thing for every student, but it is measurable in every student. And so our vision was changed or created, and it is success every student, every day, is our vision. And then from that, we wrote a new mission statement. And the mission of Rockville High School is provide a safe and reaching twenty-first century learning environment that prepares our students to be college and career-ready, which is a huge push in the state right now. And a collaboration between students, the parent staff, and Grand County stakeholders will ensure that each student has the opportunity to reach their full potential and be successful, again that word that we kind of played off a lot. And then myself, Ms. Walsh, Ellie Perkins King, Karen Lell, and Christy Jordan, we came up with a group of belief statements. All of us submitted names, put those in a document. And our teachers then took those and they voted on these belief statements. And then we chose the six belief statements that we have in our school approval, in our school approval plan. And then, of course, it has a school profile, also by our school. We've got some graphs to go along with that. And then it goes to our goals. And we have four goals in the school approval plan. This plan is something that we'll try to use for the next two years and make adjustments and changes as, as we go. These goals address the State Board of Education goals that have been, basically talked, said we have to address those. Goal one addresses State Board Goal One. Goal Two addresses State Board Goal Two and Five. Three addresses Three, and Four addresses State Goal Four and Five. So, and one thing I really like about this, it talks about, it tells you how we're going to do it, what our strategies are going to be. And then, as you flip over, our next school approval team meeting is December the sixteenth. And then we'll meet, we'll be quarterly, each quarter we'll meet. And if you flip through here, it gives you a place where you can go and ask yourself questions. Are we meeting, are we meeting these things? Are our strategies working? What changes do we need to make? And we'll actually record these right in our school approval plan and use these to make the necessary changes we need to make for the next school year. So we have four goals. And then in the back, we have basically a couple waivers that require to be put in there and did the safe school plan. So if y'all have a chance to look up, do you have any questions about the high school plan at all? We'll give a new mission to you about the measurement program. It's at two o'clock. We'd love to see everyone in there. Also, you know, our seventh grade students have done projects, and they've done a really, really good job. Those, those projects will be in the library from twelve to three. If you're about to stop by and take a look at the project. Also, on November the twenty-fifth, I believe we're joining up with the high school in our book club, going to Asheville. And we're going up to Edgar Allen Poe. It's like a series of plays and short stories. So it's, it ought to be some kind of a release out of that. Basketball unit started, of course. Actually, our first basketball game is this Thursday. So we're playing this Thursday at home on our support. We had to kind of back it up a little bit because of the Bedford State project, our Bedford State program. We were going to start four, but we backed it up to four thirty, just in case. But then with our school approval plan again, we, we had a great team. They, they worked really well. We had a great group of parents that came in, they had a lot of good suggestions. And it was a very, very smooth process. Through our plan, we can take you a look at our mission statement in the middle school. The mission statement that we had in place, it addresses all five board, State Board goals. And we felt like, you know, that it was a good mission statement. So we, we did leave it alone. We, you know, if you have our plan and looking through it, we here on page seven, you know, we have all of our data from the past in there. Sorry, on page eight is where we come up with our goals. We did come up with three different goals. Of course, you know, you're, you're going to have goals about texting and all that, and all that. You know, we have a couple of those goals. The one goal that I think that, that we felt strongly about, probably the thing that we feel like we need to work on as, as a school more than anything is our goal theory. And some of you, some of you have been in the middle school before, you know that right now we're in that transition period between, you know, being a kid and, and becoming an adult. And so one thing that we're really going to work on is the responsibility of our students, the level of responsibility, organization type skills, you know, because all that stuff really, that affects every part of their education. And so there's something that we, we felt real strongly about, and that's what we're going to, we're going to put a lot of focus on. You know, I know that Mr. Walsh is going to go into classes, and he's wanting to help the students with organizational skills. And I'm going to go in and talk about the importance of being organized and responsibility. Even talked about having Mr. Madison come down and talk to him about, you know, what it's going to take to be successful in a high school. We need to try to develop these, these skills now when they get on the third or there. And anyway, we, we had a very good, very good team. Feel like we have a very good plan. So if I have any questions about our plan?
As far as announcements, yes, Miss Hooker kind of hit on some of those. We're going to have a trip to Ellenboro Elementary pretty soon. All K-three representatives from our school, a teacher from each grade. To look at their school, it's a school similar to ours. It's a school that's got sixty-plus kids and sixty, sixty-plus percentage of kids and free to use lunch. It's a title on school. It's a K-five school. It's similar in their schedule. And the main thing we're looking at though is how to help kids with strategies work the best and how best to do, when to do those dimensions in our schedule. And so we think that that's a, you went to meeting, a presentation with that school. And it sounded real good. They have real good test scores. So that's something that comes up for us as a business at that school because we are struggling right now as far as Read to Achieve, which you mentioned, and trying to figure out what exactly to do for the third grade and how to put all of that in place. If you're familiar with any of this, it's, it's pretty tough to do all that. The state's come up with this portfolio, which is another chance for a child to be promoted fourth grade. They fail the test, they fail the retest. The only thing that can help them is this portfolio. And if we make sure we get that put together right, we decide to do that for all the kids in the third grade, not just struggling kids. Because some kids have A averages, or A average, they fail the test too. And if they don't have any other avenue bias, you know, we feel like a bit of a bear. So along with the struggling kids, we think that the average child does a good job, some tests well, we think they need another chance too. So we're trying to get all that together, along with all the other things the third grade has to do. The sixth grade's probably tested more than the eighth grade, so we're on the line. But I'm just trying to figure out what to do. But anyway, another announcement is we've got a new grandson. You mentioned these kids. School approval plan, we, our plan is very similar to what it's been in the past. And our plan, if you look on page nineteen, that's where the core of the plan is. That's where all of our strategies are. There's references to, you know, strategies and goals for those strategies. But those things on page nineteen are all tied into pages nineteen through thirty-two, which has four goals that are aligned to the five State goals. And we just felt like the format's all changed. And we just felt like we needed to look at what we've got on nineteen, which is the strategies. Where do they fit in these goals we've come up with? How are we going to do these things? And I think it's pretty easy to understand if you're, you know, just keep, keep in mind page nineteen, which is the focus area, and then look at the four goals and strategies and follow each one. Some of them repeat each other, but they're all spread out. The team worked so hard to try to come up to address this new format, get everything to where we can understand it. And prior to page nineteen, we've got, you know, test scores for the last four years with the year ending in eleven-twelve. That's the most recent results we have. And one thing to keep in mind when we do get these new test scores, you know, this last year's group, grades three through high school, that's the first year they had to come to more requirements. So they're the guinea pigs for this new test. You know, I think it's good we've still got other scores in the school approval plan to show what we were. Now we're helping adjust this new test. We'll get back to there again. I don't know how these scores are going to look, but I know what we did about twelve, and it was a really great job, you know. Last year, that's the first group they're reading here of coming for, the kids, the teachers. That's going to be, you know, a big adjustment. So if anybody got any questions on school approval plan, y'all have a copy of mine, right?
I just have one question about that test. You said if a kid's like an A/B student and he fails that new test and fails the retest, he'll be retained or shut?
Yeah, there's a, there's a big flow chart with Read to Achieve. And if they fail, they fail the first go around, they are not required to take a retest. I mean, they can go ahead and be retained in the third grade. They take the retest, which they can take a EOG retest or a Read to Achieve test. I don't know what that even is, but if they, if they fail that, and they refuse, the son that refused to go to summer school when they failed the third grade, if they go to summer school and then take the Read to Achieve test again, fail it again, then they're retained in the third grade. The only option for kids that, that, the only other avenue there to be promoted to the fourth grade is to have a portfolio completed by their teachers. It's got three major parts where you've documented how they've done, how they've shown progress, starting in January. We're going to have requirements that's supposed to be earned in January, and showing that, you know, here's why they still should be promoted even though they failed the test again. So it's...
So there is a, what I'd call a loophole?
Yeah, I, no, no longer can the principal determine if you pass or fail the third grade.
Right.
If you don't pass that test. The only way that that child can pass is if the portfolio is completed. And I recommend to Ms. Tatt, if they, if they beat promoted, she makes the decision on that. Don't I drive Ms. Tatt?
Yes, sir.
So it's a little unusual, but...
The third grade's only ready for the test.
Yeah, only the third grade. And then there's another part there too, that they can be placed in the fourth grade with a retention label and take the test again in November. And then if they, they're doing the fourth grade work, they'll take the third grade test. But November, if they take the test and pass, and they stay in the fourth grade, if they fail it, they don't get retained back to the third, but this, that stays on the record. So it works.
And I just know you, one of my fears at this point to add to what he's saying is the state is telling us that we will have this portfolio in January, and that it has to be completed with a child showing proficiency by one-hundred-and-seventy-fourth day of school. My fear is, just like these test scores, it's supposed to be in, you know, whatever month, but then it's delayed a couple of months because they're slow getting it out. And we still have children that need the option to show proficiency through this portfolio, but we're not going to get it in our hands when they're telling us that we're going to be getting it in our hands.
So the state is going to give you the requirements of the portfolio that's not put together by a teacher?
It's three components.
It's three components, and one of those comes directly from the state.
And so do you know what the components are?
None. The last component is the one we're really unclear on is, they're going to send us, how many passages is it?
It's, there's, there's twelve different strands that a child has to show proficiency on. The way the child shows proficiency is they have to be eighty percent proficient on three stories within that strand. Within each strand, there's ten possible stories that that child can attempt to show proficiency on three. So they're giving us a hundred and twenty passages with each of the twelve strands, ten passages. With each of the twelve strands, ten passages, a child has to show proficient on three for each strand. So, thirty-six proficient passages. And you can only test them in three passages per week. So, that brings up my fear that if we don't get this in our hands from the state until March, there's not enough weeks for any child to show proficiency on the fourth.
Each strand, each strand.
What I'm hearing is really not a portfolio, it's more testing.
That's one component is more testing. Then the second component is the M class, which is the benchmarking required by the state.
Which is testing.
It's testing. It's progress monitoring. It's intervention and progress monitoring and benchmarking through M class. That's component one. Then component two is a P E P or other data that you have for this individual child where you progress monitor them in other ways, which is more testing.
Which is R P I.
And then you have the third component, which is the hundred and twenty stories from the state, which is more testing. That's the portfolio.
Give this about the hundred and twenty passages. Yeah, she mentioned twelve strands. Well, there's nineteen, uh, reading literacy strands. We called them and asked them, which, what are, what are the twelve? Well, they didn't know. They had to come play out. We still don't know. And so, we just need to study all of them, because it'll be based on that. But when a child takes a test on that passage, if they don't make eighty percent, get four out of five questions, then that attempt has to be recorded in that portfolio too. Do y'all guess on any attempts?
So, yes, let's say that you have a child and the only students that are exempt are students who are only exam, one exam. Those are the only students who are exempt. So, if you have a child with a diagnosed or an disability, they struggle. They have a diagnosed disability. If they take standard one or whatever and they take all ten of those exams and they don't get those three proficient within that one, there's no way they can show proficiency on any of the rest of the portfolio.
So, they'll end up being in the third grade for the rest of their lives, sounds like.
And at the same time during the year, keep in mind, third grade, testimony, you're a, a state wife applies from the stretch. Third grade's a big hit for read achieve.
We're talking about eight-year-old kids.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I would say we're just, we're just trying to figure out what's the best way to do it and not bill against confidence or not make them, uh, more test anxious than they already are. You know, there's lots of components that you've got to consider when you're thinking about implementing this to keep kids in mind and, and not to make them miserable through this whole process as well.
Uh, I got an email this morning, uh, about the testing from last year. I'm sure Kevin and Shane probably got it too, but from the state talking about how we needed to address the test scores with parents to make it not look as bad as it's gonna look. Uh, I mean, just to give you the time, the numbers I've seen, nothing's out yet. It won't be until the end of this week. But, you know, schools that have scored eighty percent proficient in the last few years are scoring forty and forty-five percent proficient, uh, this year because of the revamped test. I mean, the bar's been raised and it's gonna take a while to get back to that. I mean, I, I just think...
And that will be consistent nationally.
Oh, yeah, all over North Carolina and Common Core's everywhere now pretty much, so... I don't know how long it'll be here, but...
By the time we figure out how to raise our scores without changing...
To me, I'll be off. To me, it's just, uh, move to make public education look bad. I'm more just saying that's what it is.
And, and to show how that is a picture across the state. I was just at the Title One Conference last week and there was this man stood up and he said, "I want you to know that I had an D S L group, English Second Language Group, that was testing in two thousand and eleven and twelve that were eighty-five point seven percent proficient." And I just looked at a number that told me those same children were twenty-two percent proficient. He said, "I don't know that people get any head of them." He's like that. So, I mean, that was just from, from somebody else. I mean, that was in a completely different area. So, it's just, it was predominant from things that we were hearing at the conference.
Well, and then let me give you another, this is how messed up this system is. Uh, on E V O S, you know, I, I've got teachers that show, that show growth in their kids. I mean, and substantial growth like they should, but these kids are still, they're not proficient when it comes to the, the O C last year that was given. But they showed growth based on, it, it's a two-inch sword. That whole unit is...
I think y'all read somewhere that, uh, across the state, more than seventy-five percent of all students are not proficient on tests. So...
Test makers could be proficient in. I'm serious.
It all depends by place of the law.
Yeah.
Appears.
Yes.
Money, man. Okay, we're sure of that. Yeah, we cover this all feels...
All right, personal.
Uh, yes, during closed session, I'll be bringing you names for, uh, substitute custodian and some substitute best coaches.
Mr. Rassell, your inner sports contracts?
And I will put it down for that, but I can address that.
Okay. Sorry.
During the session, I'll be bringing you the contracts from the inner sport and the middle school at your high school.
For the coaches.
For the coaches.
And it, do we do the volunteer approval, is not all that?
It's all in there.
It's all in there?
Anybody that has a new school profile.
Okay. Basically, I don't know if I would make sure I get through. For a volunteer, let me make that out, not the contract. Board policies, first and second readings.
Uh, uh, if you'll notice on the second reading, uh, they'd be for improvement of the data, spine policy. If you have any questions on that. On first reading, these are all required, again, I mean, we're just doing required changes. And, um, they're all twenty thirteen, um, legislative, um, changes. If you're a little bit comprehensive, federal education policy thirty-five, forty. The General Assembly changed, um, one fifteen C eighty-one this year to add I. Uh, each local school administrative unit shall provide reproductive health and safety education program commencing in the seventh grade and includes a following. This is what's required change. Um, that the school teaches about prevent, preventable risk of preterm birth and subsequent pregnancies, including induced abortion, smoking, alcohol consumption, the use of illicit drugs, and inadequate prenatal care. Uh, so, the policy thirty-five, forty, forty reflects that required change, um, under A, page one A, uh, second paragraph, that's all new. Um, I think there'd be a legislative correction. It says subsequent, I think what it meant to say, because I went back to the, to the session law and it says, um, preventable causes of preterm birth, including induced abortion as a cause of preterm birth and subsequent pregnancies. Not that you're just gonna teach about subsequent pregnancies. I, I, I think that's a legisla, that's an error in the law, but in the General Assembly, they had it stated correctly. Let's see. The next, for first reading, is student voter registration. This is a brand-new policy. Um, it's optional, so you don't have to add it, but you have to decide that. You have to proactively have a motion to have it or not have it. And, um, what it did is just, it eliminated the requirement of having your students for, um, preregistration, um, for voter registration. And, um, the board says it's committed to securing the future, the future of democracy and preparing young people to be educated and engaged voters. Um, in keeping with the commitment, the board directs the superintendent to establish a committee of high school social study teachers and other appropriate school personnel to collaborate with the Board of Elections to facilitate and encourage voter registration on all high schools in the school system. Okay? So, in compliance with, um, a particular statute, the principal of each high school shall make available to all students and others who are eligible to register to vote with application forms described in compliance with statute one seventy-three eighty-two. So, as opposed to being required to do registration, you're going to encourage, um, young people to about democracy and also make available the forms, uh, but not require that they be filled out. So, if you adopt this policy, it would be in this form or either you decide not to adopt student voter, um, education. Um, domicile or, or residence requirements, policy forty-one twenty. I, I've never known, it, it's a hot issue about where your domicile and where your residence is. But I think you've all handled it working with the adjoining counties out here. I mean, we all sort of are connected to Georgia and Tennessee and all. It, it's not been a problem, but across the state it is. Um, one of the, the General Assembly did this year is clarify that students who are entitled to special education services may attend schools tuition-free until age twenty-two. If you're non-domiciled, you can charge tuition, but you can't do that. It, it, in the old, when I went back and read the old law, it is confusing. It looks like you can charge tuition to a special ed student and you only have to educate them under twenty-one. But this is a mandated change this year, clarifying that students who are entitled to special education services may attend schools tuition-free when they're non-domiciled until age twenty-two. And Angie, I checked in with Angie on that one and you're all up to it. Um, that, it's not an issue. Okay. Um, student, um, search, forty-three, forty-two, it's a nightmare too. Um, and, and not just across North Carolina's schools, but, you know, you have students with weapons or contraband and all, but at any rate, this policy thirty-three, thirty-two is totally revised and reorganized to clarify the standards for church searching students and to provide additional guidance. So, the General Assembly did that this year and they, um, revised and reorganized it to group the different types of authorized searches into separate sections, depending on whether the search is based on individualized, um, reasonable suspicion or a suspicionless search. So, they have two different searches and then includes specific requirements. You know, they gotta look at those really closely. It includes specific requirements for lawful student searches. Um, then provides additional information regarding the constitutional standards for more intrusive personal searches. Clarifies the standard for suspicionless general searches. Establishes reasonable suspicion as the standard for the search of an individual's desk or student's desk or lot. Directs school officials to promptly turn over illegal contraband to law enforcement. Um, imposes consequences for failure to cooperate with reasonable searches. And if you have a non-student arrive at a school function and they refuse to be searched because there's, you know, S R O's, whatever, they can be denied, denied entrance. But that's clarified now. Um, and then there's a notice requirement. And, um, the notice requirement, you don't, um, you're required to provide written notice to students and parents of the school's policy on, uh, general searches, but you're not required to disclose, um, when the search is going to be conducted. But you are required to, to give notice that there'll be a general search, just not when. Okay? It's pretty detailed and, um, I think it does clarify the, the, the search, um, grantor. It does put a burden on the principals and the superintendent that even before a general search, you know, there used to be sheriffs department coming to schools, not that it's going to go live, but... But the superintendent or the principal needs, before a general search, have, has to have, articulate reasons that there's been some patterns of questionable behavior or, um, or disruptions. So, okay. Um, if you look that over, have any questions on that? Then, um, the final one from the first reading is registered sex offenders. That was rewritten to clarify which sex offenders are statutorily banned from campus. Not every sex offender is banned, unfortunately. But this does clarify meeting two burdens. So, you have to meet North Carolina General Statute fourteen to oh eight, point eighteen, and, uh, chapter fourteen, article seven A. So, if you meet those two criteria, um, then the person can't be banned from the campus. Um, and remember, and, and if you're not working closely on that, it applies to, um, any, all your contractual services, whether it's P T O T or a building contractor for an addition. Um, the contracts have, there's a requirement, and we, we do that, and we do that here, so... That that being the contract, that there's been, that the contractor, I don't know what, is aware of this requirement on campus and that they've all had their representative, evaluations about no sex offenders on the project. So, um, my advice is, you know, we all, I have my chapter fourteen book with me. It's about this size too. So, um, the thing is, I, my recommendation is err on the side of caution until we have the required paperwork to notice fourteen to oh eight and fourteen seven A. So, um, and that includes the five new policies. Thank you.
Can I ask you one question back on the health education one? That is still part of it. It's with consent, so parents still have a say whether or not their child can participate in this class?
Oh, of doubt?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, yes, I, I say that with some hesitancy. It doesn't relieve the school from offering this.
Oh, no, but it's good, I think they have a right to offer that.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Just out of curiosity, what sex offenders are allowed on campus?
Aaron, come on.
Anyone that is not listed in fourteen two oh eight, it's, um...
And if they're convicted sex offenders, some of them can come on campus?
Right, they have to be convicted of, um, what's in chapter fourteen, seven A. And they're mostly just, they're mostly rape or some derivative rape. They're, they're not.
It, it's more a scheduled conference though.
Excuse me?
It's, it's not just to come on campus and run around and there's some real strict guidelines.
Right, about being the three hundred feet.
Like a parent conference and they supervise the whole time, those kind of things.
Yeah, you still have to do your parent conference and all, but it's all the permission and supervision and you have your S R O.
Yeah. So, that doesn't mean you can just kind of like put a flag in?
No, it's not, yeah. Nothing's changed about that. I think that's just clarification.
Perfect. Well, I was gonna tell you the test scores will be released this week. That was really the biggest thing I had to talk about. I think we've discussed that and, and they will be released to the public on November the seventh, I believe. And, um, we have the individual student scores coming in our offices this time and they'll be released with some extra... be released with some expert information.
Is the phone wire working?
It wasn't working as of yesterday, though. So that's why I say at this time, we may not be able to get them all home. We just have, if you want to stay allowed, we're very sensitive.
Anybody else? All right, is there a motion to go in closed session?
Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A three and one forty-three, three eighteen eleven C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education go in a closed session to receive advice from M L A Davis Attorney for the Grand County Board of Education, which advice comes within the purview of the attorney-client privilege. The advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education go in a closed session for the purpose of considering personnel and property matters as defined in and allowed by North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A six and North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C, three twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Say.
All in favor?